James, we ready? I'll call the meeting to order at six thirty P. M. and we will all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
George Cullis.
Yes.
Karen Winchester here. Jennifer Ryan.
Yes.
Derek Burton.
Here.
Ryan Mattson.
Here.
Michael McCanny.
Here.
Richard Kinnaman.
Here.
All right. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Winchester.
Support.
Support by Burton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial. They do not require a decision by the township board and they will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. If discussion is desired on an item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will automatically be moved to the last item under new business.
So I would like to move something down. Just for clarification, that'd be the regular meeting minutes from June eighteen.
Okay.
To make item number four of your new business.
Yes. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I'd move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Motion by Winchester, is there support?
Support, Mattson.
I know that now. I have, I have your other voice.
I'm just making a habit of it now, so.
Motion by Winchester, support by Mattson on the consent agenda, all in favors. Or, no, um, roll call, please.
Richard Kinnaman.
Yes.
Mike McCanny.
Yes.
Ryan Mattson.
Yes.
Derek Burton.
Yes.
Jennifer Ryan.
Yes.
Karen Winchester, yes. George Cullis.
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Public hearing, we have none. Presentations, we have none. HRC was gonna be with us this evening. They had some scheduling conflicts, so we're gonna look at scheduling a separate meeting for, um, going over the new building project. But for tonight, we have no presentation. Um, then we'll go into reports. I will start down here with Mr. McCanny.
Anything from the planning commission to report?
No, we're still planning.
Still planning? Still planning. What's, what's the project at hand, or is it?
Uh, the extension of the building for the heating and cooling on Fish Lake and Grinch Hall.
Oh, okay.
They need to come back with a, a more robust package with actually what needs to be built. And, um, we're, I'm keep bringing up this thing about color, so we're gonna probably, I don't know where to start, either start here or at the planning commission to do a color palette for the township, so we can stay away from gray and white buildings. I think we need some type of color encouragement. I don't know how to do that, but we're working on it. I'm working on it.
Okay.
And which building is that? Like which location, or is that the greenhouse?
It's on the southeast corner of Fish Lake and Grinch Hall.
Crane heating.
I'm sorry, what?
They always have a giraffe on their side, right?
Crane.
Crane.
Crane. Yeah, it's crane heating and cooling.
Gotcha, okay. All right, Mr. Mattson.
Um, I had a question if you, if maybe it's part of your reports, but, uh, the reason I ask which location, what's going on with the greenhouse produce shop at the corner of Grinch Hall and Fish Lake? I know there's, they were supposed to have been getting ready to construct.
Are you referring to Lamont?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Uh, anything else for your report?
Uh, just that, uh, on the first, next month is my five-year wedding and ten-year anniversary with my wife, and so I just wanna, uh, give her her flowers and thank her for choosing me and that, uh, I am a better man today than I was, uh, before having her in my life, and I'm very fortunate and blessed, so very excited to celebrate, uh, ten years together and many more to come, so that's it.
Good news, boy. You should give points for that.
So I'll answer your Lamont question. So he has submitted for his building permit. He has one thing to, that he had to go back to his architect for was to define what was going in under the overhangs, um, for the building use, and then his permit will be issued.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And, and just for the record, because a couple of you are new to the board, the site plan for that property was approved in twenty twenty-two?
Mm-hmm.
So, and, and this board granted two extensions, one in twenty-three and one in twenty-four.
Gotcha.
Okay. All right. I will go down to, uh, Mr. Kinnaman.
Uh, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, uh, we have a couple of events coming up in the next couple of weeks. We have, uh, the sidewalk sales, um, not this coming weekend, but the following weekend, um, twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, um, right here in your downtown Holly. And, um, then the following weekend on Saturday, August second, um, you could take your wife out that night as well. Um, to Blues Brews and Barbecue, uh, that, uh, the Chamber does in coordination with the Moose Lodge. Um, we do have tickets available for advance purchase, uh, that are, um, at a reduced rate, uh, from walk-ins at the door, and those can be purchased at the Chamber office, at, uh, Wingle Meyer Furniture, uh, or at the Moose Lodge.
And those are how much?
Um, twenty dollars advance, there'll be twenty-five at the door. Um, or you could, um, reserve a table for eight and talk to me about that. Includes food and a drink coupon and, um, a table under the tent.
Mr. Burton?
Okay, so Hyatt did not meet this month. Um, I've not spoken to Tina yet, um, but one thing we'll need to handle next month is due to the way that those meetings have been scheduled with the change, uh, to accommodate my schedule back then, uh, it was hard to get all the reports and try to do all the coordination for future events, so they have reverted back to the old date, which I can no longer attend those meetings. So if you wanna have a representative attend those next month, we'll want to, but I just wanna mainly bring that out here as a point to think about, if anyone may wanna be on that board, and then I'll reach out to Tina tomorrow.
What date are they going back to?
The first Thursday of the month.
And at what time?
Uh, three o'clock or three-thirty? Yeah, something like that. I'd have to confirm, I'd see her three or three-thirty, I think three o'clock.
First Thursday?
Yeah, first Thursday of the month.
I think that becomes difficult for virtually any of us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To attend a daytime meeting.
Yeah, well, that's what I was taking vacation time to go to.
Oh, I think.
And for me, it's just a blessing in disguise.
Am I allowed to? If I'm allowed to, I'll do that.
I think, I think Jen may be the person for that.
I mean, they are some great things that come out of that board, I think, you know, and things they do for youth is, is good. Um, so one of the other things I will talk about, uh, that's going on at this point in time is the Holly varsity golf coach is doing golf clinics on Wednesdays, um, right at Heather Highlands, which they're redoing. Um, so there's different age groups, I believe it's like eight to ten is from nine to ten, and then older than that is from like ten to eleven, but it's thirty dollars per student, and it basically it's a fundraiser for the varsity golf program. So it's a win-win for both. Your kid gets to learn golf, and then the varsity program gets the money from the fundraising opportunity. Um, so, so that's been successful so far, this first week due to rain, but, uh, that's been going well for them.
Now, if I have the skill set of an eight to ten-year-old, can I become a resident?
Yeah, you got it. There you go. So just sneak in.
That's when you join Spark Golf.
It was the first day, yeah.
So Amy's son is in?
Yeah, he is. I seen him on the way out.
In, in a program, and today he won the putting contest.
Did he? Okay. I told him on my way out, I said, "Is that my favorite umpire?" He goes, "Yes, it is."
Yeah, yeah, so he was, he was there.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I will go over to the treasurer, Ms. Jen.
Okay, um, just general, you know, summer tax bills are out, so come in, visit us and get those paid.
Clarify in public the dates for collection, because the tax bill's a little confusing the way it's written.
Okay, so the bills come out July first, so you can start paying the summer bill July first. It is due September fourteenth. You can still pay it through the end of February at the township, but you'll have interest every month.
Yeah, people, the way it's written, it's not clear. It's actually due by February.
It's due by September eighteenth.
Or September eighteenth.
I'm fourteenth, sorry. I don't know why I said eighteenth. September fourteenth.
September fourteenth, but payable in our office through?
The end of February.
End of February.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and that, but I will note too that the treasurer's office will be closed tomorrow.
Oh, okay. Ms. Winchester?
No report.
After all that, nothing?
Nothing, nada.
Okay. Um, from the township supervisor, so, um, a couple of things, um, we were, uh, we've had a few calls regarding code enforcement stuff, and we were out and around the township today and, and looked at some of those. Um, it's Mr. Stevens? Yep. Um, we turned your concern into the state police, that got registered today on, on your situation. Um, also, a lot of people have been, you know, there's been a lot of conversation about what's going on with the farms, that the barn just seems to be sitting there. Uh, if you go by the property and you notice a vehicle out there, a white van, um, Dean Sutton has been there for the last two to three weeks on a fairly regular basis. You haven't seen much happen, because he's been up inside the roof, I stopped there, and he's been securing the roof to the building and the framework, all in that. So when you drive by after he does a day's worth of work, you don't see anything different, 'cause it's up inside, but he does have some roof panels finally on, he, not only on the south side, but on the north side of the roof, and, and it is coming along, um, so he's moving on that. I just thought I'd mention that, 'cause I know when you drive by, it's like, I don't see anything different. Well, it's 'cause it's up inside where you don't see it. Um, in fact, I pulled in there one day, was trying to find him, and he went, "Hey!" Whoa, he's way up in the peak, so.
Do you know if he's still on pace to have the exterior constructed by the end of summer?
You know, I'm no longer committing for him, because he's missed so many dates that I, that I feel.
Yeah.
You know, uh, it was supposed to be done, it was supposed to be done, it was, he's working every day, and he has said once that roof is secured and that, a lot of people don't understand, but with the barns, once the roof is secured, it has a tendency to secure the rest of the building, and then the rest of the work, according to him, goes much quicker. It'll be the work that you see things getting done.
Right.
You know, some people have said, "I thought we were supposed to be using old wood." For those of, for those of you that don't know, a lot of the wood that they, um, brought out here is in the red barn. The basement of the red barn is, is full of wood and all the floor beams and all of that stuff, so there's a lot there that'll be coming out of there. But once we get the secure, the, the roof secured and fastened and in place, um, we did have a meeting out there with, um, both Dean Sutton, HRC, and Scott Hersberg, our building inspector, who had some questions, and to quote Scott, when the meeting was over, he said he felt warm and pleasant. So that's how that meeting went.
And now's the time to take the time to make sure it's square.
Right.
So everything else fits. Living in an old house where nothing is square, nothing is level, it makes it hard.
Yeah.
You have to keep it historical, it shouldn't be square.
And I will, I will comment on one more topic I know that most everybody knows. Um, it had been announced that Amy Hellman had been offered the job as the DDA director, and if you didn't see that meeting, it was, it was not pretty, but the village council did not appoint her, or did not approve the appointment of her. I know Derek had mentioned it at Hyatt, because it had been announced. Um, in that process, in the article in the Tri-Carding Times, one of the reasons it cites is because of her close relationship with the township supervisor. I didn't realize that they were that afraid of me, or whatever that, that spells out, but we've been very transparent here, we've worked very hard on our project and moving them forward. So, unfortunately for the village, she will not be the new DDA director, but we're, we're okay having her back here.
Okay.
So, but that's where that is. Um, let's go ahead and move on to old business, charter township.
Oh, public comment.
Oh. Sorry about that. Public comment. Do we have anybody for public comment? Uh, members of the public can address the board on agenda items only. Once recognized by the supervisor, comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may extend this time by a majority vote. Prior to addressing the board, members of the public shall state their name and address for the record. A second public comment is available after new business for all other comments. Thank you for your cooperation. Anyone for public comment? Okay. All right. We will move on to old business, which is the charter township slash detachment. Um, the, we've done, I've, I've read a lot of articles, we've looked at some stuff. I, I think the basic issues for the township are, and we need to confirm these, uh, if we put together some questions, Lisa's willing to look into this, she just needs to know what we're looking for. Um, from most of what I've read, in order for them to go into cityhood, they have to put it up for a vote of the people. Um, I question, you know, the, the village manager has made it clear that they need to go for cityhood, so they can reset the charter. Um, the charter originally allowed them to charge twenty mils, and the headly amendment over the years has reduced that to eleven point, whatever it is, it's less than twelve. Um, I can't imagine the people in the village of Holly are gonna be willing to vote to increase their taxes. There's been talk of annexing additional properties. Those people as well, from what I've read, that goes up to a vote. Again, I can't imagine, I can't imagine residents, um, voting to increase their taxes. You know, when you have a ship that is sinking, people aren't usually excited to jump on board. Um, if, if that ship was sailing off into sunset, sunset and, and palm trees, that might be a different story, but, um, we can certainly put those questions together and the concerns you may have, if you wanna email them forward, and, and at that point, um, we do have a report that was issued by, um, Fahy Schwartz at a conference, what, ten years ago? Twelve?
It's in my packet.
It's in your packet. Um, that's pretty much stayed the same, there isn't much that's changed. I did have a conversation with them, so, um, we can look at that going forward. And if the board wants, we can compile that information, give it to Lisa, and let her write a report. Lisa, do you wanna add anything to that? Okay.
So what are we looking for here exactly? 'Cause I, I think we all may have different opinions on what needs to happen.
Right.
Yeah.
So we're, we're looking at, what does it mean for us to become a charter township?
I, I don't know what.
So there's, so there's, I think there's three issues on the table. Charter township, village detachment, and cityhood. Village detachment would mean that the village would come under the township. What do those mean? What do those look like? Unfortunately, we're not in the driver's seat, we're here for reaction, because the village is moving forward, under the, under, um, city manager Tim Price, towards cityhood. And I think the biggest thing that we're gonna be having to do is make sure that all of the information gets out there, as opposed to just some of it. Um, I think, uh, what's Cascella's first name? Is it Jim?
Yeah.
Jim Cascella, um, had mentioned in a meeting that he'd like to sit down and talk to the township. Um, that's never happened at this point, but we would certainly welcome that, um, if those were open discussions. Um, I think anytime a body of people, whether it be village, township, county, otherwise, anybody starts to look at a different way of governing for themselves, I think it's important to look at all of the different options, not just one, but we'll see how that goes from here. I'm, I'm open to comments and what your thoughts are.
Well, I, I'm just, I mean, I've been open on this for many years. I'm not in favor of charter township, and we can get in for the reasons of that at a later time, or however we wanna handle that, but.
Well, I think from a standpoint of what the, the public wants to know what's out there.
Right.
So I think at some point you have to be able to put together and say, "These are the benefits of charter township, this is what the benefits do or don't do," um, because there's a lot of confusion, um, out there.
I think it's gotta be clear on the groups.
I mean, I think it's pretty clear the difference between the two. I think we're more worried about the annexation part of it.
Yeah.
But if we can supply the same criteria as a charter township for services, I think that we still, we could remain a general law township.
No, 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 and that, I disagree with that. What I'm saying is, I think it needs to be out there so the public can look at it and read it, because there are so many questions. A lot of people said, "Can't you guys just take over the township?" Well, it's not quite that, that simple, but the village can detach, and, and in that, the village needs to look at, okay, right now, in the situation the village has, they can't afford to do their roads. They, they've got a, a budget issue. What happens to the roads if the village were to dissolve? They go back to the county. What does that mean? It means you no longer have to have the, the degree of DPW department that you have, because the county would be plowing the roads. So there's a lot of that stuff to look at. What does it really mean as you move forward? You know, what services would remain, what services are lost? You know, we've heard a lot of conversation about it's cheaper to run the police department this way than it is the county sheriff, and yet they haven't had any physical bid to look at those differences. Um, we all love the police department, I'm a village resident, but at some point you have to turn to the, to the voters and you have to, or the residents, and you have to say, "We love our fire department, this is what, I'm sorry, this is what it costs to run our fire department. Do you love them enough to pay for it? And if you do, then they stay." But those are hard conversations to have, because they don't always come across as being popular. But if you're gonna go down this road of changing the way you govern yourself, I think those are all parts of it, they all have to be out there so that people can make an informed decision.
And I think they'd be out there from both sides, 'cause there, there's gonna be benefits for the village for sure, at which may come as a downfall to our township residents. So I think both of those need to be noted, not just the benefits to one group versus another, because where some may lose out on having to pay these additional taxes, the other group now would have to pay more.
Is that your main opposition? You said you've been?
Well, there's, there's opposition regarding police services, from what I've heard, I mean, and these aren't just mine, it's heard from many people. We don't wanna pay for police services. Um, the charter township, becoming a charter township at this, well, the city can still remain, even if we became a charter township today, and actually, because we do not meet all the criteria for annexation protection, we actually open ourselves up more as a charter township for annexation, 'cause it's easier to annex from a charter township than it is a general law, if they do not meet those special criteria for the annexation protection. So there's been no benefits that have been given to me for the outer township residents on why it would benefit them at all.
My argument to that is that village residents are township residents as well.
They are, and if they become a city, but, so, here's what, we're up here, we can't, this is one of these things that we cannot represent both groups, because both groups are not gonna get benefit from this. One group's going to, or one group's not. That's just the way it's gonna be. Either village residents are gonna benefit, and township residents are not, or it stays the same, and what the village is doing is what the village is doing, what the township's doing is what township's doing, or we become a charter township, what the village residents may benefit, and the charter township residents do not. So this is one rare scenario where we cannot represent both groups, and being two out of the seven people here that live in the outer township residents, that is where my argument lie.
We can make a special assessment district.
We can.
That is in with the current village district.
You mean for detachment?
For, like, the police representation and things?
Yes, if the village were to detach.
Yes.
Under the general law township. But that's what I'm saying, all those issues need to be looked at, they all need to be laid out there.
Is there a method of doing that?
Jen started a pretty good.
Method of getting the info out there?
I, I, they're really good. The documents in here are really good. Yeah. Is there a way to? How do you organize all of this?
Data into one picture?
I have to look through the file, I think that we have organized data.
Yeah.
I just wanted to pull what I knew was available, and then I can go through their last attempt and gather more.
I also just received, I just received a file in my office from a resident, um, regarding the, uh, search for cityhood back, when was the last time? Two thousand and four?
Yeah, somewhere around there.
Anyway, that person had the entire file from when they worked on it then.
So why did that fail in two thousand and four?
I have not had a chance to look into the file.
Yeah, I, I don't remember. I thought it went to the vote. Yeah, that was turned down.
I can't tell you until I can get into it, but.
Yeah.
Yep. But there, there's a lot of opinions out there, but what I've known is, is there's a lot of questions that need to be answered.
Yeah, the thing was, that was citizen-driven, that was all by petition. This is by the village government itself.
Right. It's just interesting, though, if that was a citizen, like, why did it fail? Did the signatures not get validated?
No, they were valid.
Well, there's two portions. Why did, why did they want it, and why did it fail?
Right. I'll be able to bring some of that up.
But I don't have those answers till I start to go through the file. This file is, is complete with papers and a whole slew of cut-out newspaper articles. So, but I haven't had a chance to go through.
Well, it seems like they're chasing a pot of gold, but I, I don't, in all the stuff I've been reading and researching, I don't think there's a pot of gold that they're gonna get.
Well, and, you know, Tim, Tim Price made the comment, "We need cityhood so we can reset the charter." Well, you wanna reset the charter to put the taxes back up to twenty mils? I can't see the residents going through that at all.
And then they're gonna have a special assessment district on top of that for another four.
You made the comment, though, that it have-
One group's going to or one group's not. That's just the way it's gonna be. Either village residents are gonna benefit and township residents are not, or it stays the same. And what the village is doing is what the village is doing. What township's doing is what township's doing. Or we become a charter township, what the village residents may benefit and the charter township residents not. So this is one rare scenario where we cannot represent both groups. And being two out of the seven people here that live in the outer township residents, that is where my argument lie.
We can make a special assessment district.
We can.
That is in with the current village district.
You mean for detachment?
For like the police representation and things?
Yes, if the village were to detach.
Yes.
Under the general law township. But that's what I'm saying. All those issues need to be looked at. They all need to be laid out there.
Is there a method of doing that?
Jen started a pretty good.
Method of getting the info out there?
I, I, they're really good. The documents in here are really good. Is there a way to, how do you organize that data into one picture?
I have to look through the file. I think that we have organized data.
Yeah.
I just wanted to pull what I knew was available and then I can go through their last attempt and gather more.
I just received a file in my office from a resident regarding the search for cityhood back, when was the last time? Two thousand four?
Yeah, somewhere around there.
Anyway, that person had the entire file from when they worked on it then.
So why did that fail in two thousand four?
I have not had a chance to look into the file.
I don't remember. I thought it went to the vote. Yeah, that was turned down.
I can't tell you until I can get into it. There, there's a lot of opinions out there, but what I've known is, is there's a lot of questions that need to be answered.
The thing was, that was citizen driven. That was all by petition. This is by the village government itself.
Right. It's just interesting though, if that was a citizen, like why did it fail? Did the signatures not get validated?
No, they were valid.
Why did, why did they want it and why did it fail?
Right.
But I don't have those answers till I start to go through the file. This file is, is complete with papers and a whole slew of cutout newspaper articles. But I haven't had a chance to go through.
Well, it seems like they're chasing a pot of gold, but I, I don't, in all the stuff I've been reading and researching, I don't think there's a pot of gold that they're gonna get.
Well, and you know, Tim, Tim Price made the comment, we need cityhood so we can reset the charter. Well, you wanna reset the charter to put the taxes back up to twenty mils? I can't see the residents going through that at all.
On top of that for another four.
You made the comment though that it'd have to go to a vote of the people about the mils. I don't believe it does.
You have to, the people have to approve the charter. If you become a city, then you have three attempts for the people to vote to approve the new charter. And if they don't, then you don't become a city.
Where they would put their mill rate and uncapping the taxes and whatever else.
Yep. It doesn't, yeah, it just bumps that mill rate up. It doesn't uncap anything.
I thought they could uncap it.
Uncap the taxes, taxable value? I don't think so. That's a separate thing.
No, well, it, it changes it from the eleven mils to the twenty mils.
You're talking on tacking, uncapping the mileage.
No, I believe, I believe the taxable values can become uncapped if they were to be, if they and set the, the mill rate.
That would be a horrifying thing.
I understand.
But I don't, I don't think.
I've never read that anywhere.
Those are, those are unanswered questions. Yeah.
So when you say chasing a pot of gold, it's not that things necessarily are cheaper or it's better like these articles say. You know, they would have to manage their taxes and elections and all, all the things. And then if they did acquire any property, an asset, they'd have to pay some portion of that back to the town. Like all that, you'd have to pay the surveyor to get things done, like all that has to get paid for.
I don't know how they can do that.
By uncapping and doing these things, and as this information said, they would be net positive far greater than what they are. Obviously, they had to pass this thing to just pay, keep the lights on.
So in two thousand twenty-two, they put a two mil request on the ballot for public safety. And the voters voted it down. The unfortunate thing is the village didn't go back and say, okay, the voters don't want it. How are we gonna cut back? They just kept going on like they were until they walked themselves into the situation they are now.
Well, you gotta think too, a lot of the situation now are, don't even have to do with people working actually in person. It's all the unfunded pension liabilities that they have, which if they detach, I have a feeling would probably become ours. Even the outer township residents did not benefit from those unfunded pension liabilities.
Well, that, those are, those are all the questions that you have to look at going forward.
So that's what they're trying to get at. They're trying to get at getting more money.
Oh, yeah. They want, they wanna raise it to twenty mils and they want to annex a whole bunch of the township to increase their tax base.
Yep. All of the riversides.
All the developments.
All the developments.
They want it to be a nice square.
Everybody who uses their water and sewer, and then they have to go all the way to the high school because the high school is like a four twenty-five agreement. So you have to, you can't, they don't like pockets. So they'd have to go all the way to the high school.
I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty simple to look at why, they don't have enough money to run the village. So their solution is, who else can we get to help pay for?
And they don't care what they do.
But it's not getting other people to help to pay for it. They're like, okay, who else can we steal money from to make this thing work? Cause it's property tax. Is there any other method of, of funding government besides property tax?
Yes. Property taxes is, property taxes is a small part of our budget at the township because we have revenue sharing. I don't know what percentage of the village's budget is property tax.
Versus revenue sharing?
In, in relationship to revenue sharing. But the majority of our budget comes from revenue sharing, and that's what you get out of the sales tax statewide.
Cause I personally think property tax is evil. That's just evil.
Well.
That's just my opinion. That's my opinion. Sorry.
At least we don't have to pay it on like our cars. I've lived in states where you have to pay it on your vehicle and every little thing.
Different ways, for sure, but the problem is that like, the things are dwindling and they're trying to expand into a dwindling, into a dwindling, it's just crazy.
They, once Brooks Patterson passed away and the Democrats took over, they, they marched right in. And the first thing they did was put that on the ballot and the whole northern, western part of the county voted no. And we got stuck with it anyway because we don't have enough population. And now they grew what they were collecting. They, they sold it as a reduction. They went from one mil to point nine five. But by capturing the whole northwest part of the county, they've now got that tax for ten years.
Gotta be a better way. I don't know what.
Yep. So, alright.
So will this be left on the agenda? So I, I guess I'm looking for next steps here on what we're, cause like I said, we're all gonna have various opinions on how we need to go.
Well, I think minimum, we need to have our, our answer, our questions answered for the next meeting. Cause like I've, I'm ready to move on a process that's gonna protect the township entirely. So.
And I'm against it.
And that's fair.
Well, and the charter, what, charter township wouldn't protect that.
Charter township, under, whatever is, whatever that process is going to be, because they are full steam ahead. Cityhood with this and we don't know, the boundary commissioners now, we don't know the governments that, you know, these entities that are, you know, the MML is very pro-cityhood. We don't, we don't know. Like, okay, it's failed two or three times before, but new people get into office and things change. And you wanna talk about hurting the township, you're gonna wipe out what, seventy-five percent of its tax base? That's gonna hurt.
And revenue sharing because we'll lose all that population.
Unfortunately, the only thing we may, the only thing we may be able to do is to counter the information they put out there. We may, we may become the entity that makes sure that all the information's available. Because they're the driving force. We, there's nothing we can pass that stops them from doing that.
Maybe we need to consider the, providing the garbage service so that we have the services we need to, so that they have a harder time annexing because we meet that criteria.
Right. I mean, does, does, I mean, it talks about like police being required, man, like can we contract with MSP for a low level of service?
We already have MSP.
Yeah.
Well, then I, so then how do we not have a police service?
We do.
Well, and the thing, it said that, that was something that we didn't offer to, as a charter township to protect us from annexation.
We don't have our own department.
Okay.
The same with water and sewer, so that, so I don't want.
Water and sewer, we can't start by contract. So it was by contract with the village, so.
But if, if you, so I guess that's another thing is do septic tanks and wells come for that? Cause if not, then the whole township does not have that.
Yeah, but then they look at that, that you don't have the need in those other areas.
It's not that a hundred percent of the township has to have that service in order to qualify. But you need to be providing it.
Well, that, that's what we need, the answers to a lot of those questions.
So are you documenting the questions right now or?
And what I said is, Lisa, my suggestion was if everybody sends their questions so we can compile them all together and pass them on to her. We can't fire them off tonight and have her take notes.
Who are these being sent to?
Send them, yeah, just send them to the office.
Well, to, to Karen. Yeah, to the clerk.
Yeah, cause she doesn't have enough to do. She needs more.
Well, I'm the keeper of the records. I wanna make sure I give everybody's stuff.
Go ahead.
And do, don't do it as a group email.
Right, right, exactly.
No discussion.
So just to be clear then, the questions are focused on whether you should incorporate as a charter township in the benefits?
No.
I mean, I think that's one of them.
Yeah, I think it covers all three. The detachment of the village, the village becoming a city, and us becoming a charter township. I think that we're all three of these subjects.
What are the effects of that happening? If you read that report from Fahey, it, it talks about a lot of that already.
The Fahey report is not in here. I didn't see it.
Well, I thought you said it was in there.
I thought it was in here. Yeah, there's various documents.
That one from two thousand.
It wasn't in the first, uh, that, the first agenda that I sent you, cause I, I hadn't looked at that.
We'll get it to you. We'll make sure you have.
No, it's from two thousand one.
Well, it's online too. But yeah, it is in here. So all, yeah, we wanna look at all of the, what are the effects of all of those things?
And like I said, we're, we're just wanting information so we can supply answers. Because ultimately, we have no decision-making ability. We have to follow their lead, so to speak.
And I'll pull the. But my communication to the board would be attorney-client privileged, right? This is to educate the board.
Yep.
And then I can pull the attorney stuff from the last effort, you know, some of those materials for you.
Well, see, and I would almost prefer, this is information we're gonna be sharing. We don't wanna share piecemeal information. So I would almost prefer it to come from you publicly. That way you can take the factual information and here it is. There's no this person saying this, that person's.
That's something different.
I know. And that's what I'm saying is, I personally would prefer that because then it's very independent.
So perhaps, uh, correspond, attorney-client privileged correspondence discussed in closed session at a future meeting. And then after we have our attorney-client privileged communications, then you can decide where to go with it from there. And if, if the decision from there is, put together a fact sheet with just the facts, then that, what we could do. But after our privileged communication, you may choose not to do that.
So it's a couple-step process. Alright.
So you would pro, you would be preparing basically a report that you would, that we, we would review then in a closed session?
It, every communication that I have with you is privileged.
Right.
So I could write you the privileged letter, but then it wouldn't be a dialogue where I'm giving you legal advice, sitting down in response to, or in reaction to that letter. So oftentimes it's helpful when you have a close, when you have an attorney-client privileged communication that you wanna have dialogue about and understand issues that might interplay. Close session is the best place to do it because I'm your attorney and you have that right to have these communications privileged as legal counsel. And frankly, if you share attorney-client privileged communication, whether in an open meeting or just out in the public, you potentially could waive that privilege. So it's really important that we're careful with it, which is why we like to do it in closed session so you have that opportunity to have these conversations with your lawyer.
Okay.
Would it be realistic to be able to do that at the next meeting?
I think we'll have to leave that up to her when she's ready.
Okay.
It sounds like a big package.
It's a lot.
Okay.
The question is, how fast are they moving in the village?
At the last village meeting, they are going to make a vote at the next one about, to start pursuing it.
Yeah, but even if they start it, that's a couple of year process.
I'm just saying, they're, they're moving with speed.
If you tell me you want it for the next meeting, I will make that happen.
Okay.
I would ask, if you can, great. If not, we'll look at the September meeting, you know? If you feel like it's not ready, then.
I think I'll have a better feel once I start getting into it and then I can communicate with the supervisor whether I think it's gonna make it or not. Give them a heads up.
Yeah.
Okay.
And with that, I mean, we, everyone up here needs to be also then timely with our questions to be able to get this back. So we gotta keep that in mind as well.
Yep.
Alright.
I just have to say, this collection of information is daunting just to start with. And, you know, if you prepared all of this as it is, um, this is a lot. And, um, thank you for this level to start with.
Especially the first eight pages. I just thought it was so wonderful.
Oh my gosh, yeah.
It, it all felt overall largely objective, like all these articles were, were fairly consistent in their messaging. It talked about all sides, you know, the, the different things and, um, but like breaking down the, the numbers, the current taxable values and the mill rates and this is what it would be net positive for this approach or net negative here. Like, yeah, it was, it was wonderful. It was a lot of information, a lot of hard work went into it. So truly, I, I appreciate the objectivity especially.
Jen was the report person. She put that together.
Awesome. Well.
Well done.
With all the.
Yeah. But even with all that, it still seems, I don't know what the next step is.
Right.
Well, that's why I said there's so many complexities to it.
It's very speculative. A lot of it's speculative.
Right.
And, um, uh, I know when I was on village council, um, and they brought this, not even to this level, um, and it was all speculative is why, um, at that time I voted no on that was, the information was not, was not as, um, objective. It was still subjective material. And, um, uh, this, this was very well laid out, but it still leaves a lot of questions. And, um, I wanna see where we're at. No more questions. We're, we're nothing but answers. And, you know, for whatever direction is best to follow, but, um, yeah, this, this was a, this was more than you can read in, in a week, you know?
We have another month now.
Before we get the next batch of.
Do you guys get your copies of Michigan Township, the magazine?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody gets that?
Yes.
As well as almost a daily email with the chat stuff.
Yeah, the discussion.
The discussion board stuff.
Alright. Does that cover it for everybody? Lisa, you're good. Alright, we will move on to new business. Eagle Community Energy, Energy Management Agreement. We had the attorney look it over and there were just a couple of things that she thought might be ordered differently. Eagle, as you can imagine, does that contract state wide, so they don't necessarily make those changes. But I did ask the attorney if she felt without those changes, would there be an issue with us signing it? Did, did you wanna speak on that, Lisa?
No, I mean, just, it's a business decision at that point. So it's your decision. It's a grant. So do you turn down the grant or do you go forward with the contract that they want you to use?
Yep. And Jen, did you wanna explain the grant?
Um, sure. So it's just, um, a state grant. I think it's all, it's all federal funding. Um, yes, a hundred percent. And, um, so we just wrote up a, a budget. It's all supposed to be, um, energy related. So the budget includes an energy audit and energy efficiency upgrades, which can only be used on the existing building. They, that was one thing we had. I think we had it a little different when we first submitted it and they said you can't use any energy efficiency, any of this money to do energy efficiency in a new building. It's only for upgrading the existing one. And then we also included a new electric vehicle and some electric vehicle charging stations at the new location, both for our vehicle and then for any resident vehicles.
Yeah, I read that. I was like, whoa, we're gonna buy a car. It's cool.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, cause I'm having a heck of a time finding this, through this thing around, was there a required match to that? Or did we just include?
No, we, we had put a match in there because, well, first of all, they encourage you to, you're more likely to get it. But, um, that was meant to be tax credits. The, the matching was supposed to, I looked up how much the tax credits on that would be and it was, that's where that came from. I do not know if those tax credits are still in effect at this point, but that's what they were at the time.
Can I request that we get like a van-type vehicle that's covered for moving of election equipment and valets and all that stuff? Cause when it rains, it's a real problem.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure we can talk to them. I don't, I don't think they're too particular about what kind of vehicle we get, as long as it's electric. And I mean, in our township, we're mostly just driving the truck around the township. So it's not like you have to worry about it running out of power.
We could go back and forth to the county, but I still think that's within the range.
Yeah.
That'll be through my deal, I think, right, the truck or?
Mostly.
Oh, probably, yeah.
I was gonna ask, what, what is the planned purpose for the vehicle, if we're gonna get a vehicle? Like what's gonna be its primary use?
Well, we have one now that we use for like code enforcement, driving around the township or if anybody needs to go to a meeting or things like that, so you don't have to pay for mileage, stuff like that. So it's just kind of like a multi-use.
Moving election cab.
But it's limited because it's a single cab, two-seater. It's an older vehicle, so it doesn't have the phone connection and it's got an open bed. So as she mentioned, like for rain and stuff, for hauling stuff.
So they're fitting more people.
Yeah. If you wanna go to a meeting or something and there's three of you, you're not using the township truck.
Well, you can get a long-range, rear-wheel-drive, uh, Cybertruck for like sixty K, so. If we're ready to get an electric vehicle, maybe as well get one.
So on the agenda, tonight, what we're asking for is to authorize the supervisor to sign the contract.
Well, to accept the agreement and sign the contract. Well, to accept the agreement and sign the contract.
Yeah, well.
Well, does it come before the board, once like, we get the plan together for like, the vehicle and the charging station?
This is just regarding the.
Just to.
Sign the contract.
Just enter the, just to enter the grant, correct?
Got it.
I would move to accept the Eagle Community Energy Management Agreement, and authorize the township supervisor to sign it.
Second.
Motion by Winchester, support by Kineman, see how that works when we're over there? Because it's a contract, let's do a roll call.
Richard Kineman?
Yes.
Derek Burton?
Yes.
Jennifer Ryan?
Yes.
Michael McCanny?
Yes.
Karen Winchester, yes, Ryan Mattson?
Yes.
George Cullis?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Next on the, is confirm special assessment role for fire and emergency services, proposed resolution twenty twenty-five fifteen.
This is our annual resolution, um, after the public hearings and setting the amount, this is what we have to do to follow up to confirm the special assessment.
And we are confirming, I'm looking for the rate.
Four point two.
Four point two, yeah.
Oh. There it is. The funny, funny thing is up here you have four twenty twenty-five, I saw four point two up there.
Oh.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifteen, confirming the special assessment role for fire and emergency services at a mileage rate of four point two.
Support, Mattson.
Motion by Kineman, support by Mattson, to approve the proposed resolution twenty twenty-five fifteen. Uh, roll call, please.
Ryan Mattson?
Yes.
Karen Winchester, yes, Michael McCanny?
Yes.
Jennifer Ryan?
Yes.
Richard Kineman?
Yes.
Derek Burton?
Yes.
George Cullis, yes.
Oh, sorry, George.
Motion carries seven.
You were way over here.
I was down at the other end.
That's okay, I got it in there. Just keep those minutes looking good.
Okay, I will.
Riverside North Development Agreement. Um, I've spent two months with both Frank Giannetti and his partner Pete. Um, I'm not sure I know how to pronounce that last name, man.
I don't remember.
Anyway, it's, it's an Italian name. Um, the talks were good, I met with him on site, we went through the plans. Um, we probably got three quarters of the way through, and they sent a letter from their attorney. Um, and I put it on the agenda tonight, I was hoping to avoid having to go to court, but it doesn't look like we've managed to get there. So, um, I'm looking for a motion to, um, allow the attorney to possibly work it out with their attorney, if not, go to, take it to court.
Just for clarification, could you describe a little bit of who this Frank, or Fred, or?
They're the developers.
Okay.
The developer firm is BMG.
Okay.
Um, but there, there's actually three partners, but I've met with two of them on several occasions. Um, and we're at an impasse unfortunately, and that's where we're at.
And now, there's a lot of riversides, so can you give more context as to the issue?
Riverside North.
Okay.
Behind the school.
Yep, behind Patterson.
And it's in regard to like, the new development, or what is?
No, it's in regards to completing the development that already exists.
Yeah.
Um, it has to, sidewalks, trees, signage, um, they were supposed to send me, I think I gave the paper, the attorney, the, the proof that the sign was being done, and the paper that they sent, says proof on top, but there's no numbers, there's no contract, it's just a picture. So, between that and the letter, um, that's where we're at.
Negotiations went south. As soon as the attorney got involved, but he's been the problem from the very beginning of the development with them.
So are they trying to say they're not responsible, because they were not the original?
Well.
Well, we're not, we're not, yeah.
I just try to be careful what I say at a public meeting, because we could very well end up in litigation and anything that's said. Obviously, it could be used against us, um, but they have taken the position that they're not responsible, um, for the most part. We have taken the position that they are, consistent with the documents that we have in front of us.
Okay.
We did put together an agreement that's on your agenda, which would allow them to take the remaining bonds, and use that towards completion, but those bonds wouldn't, to my understanding, wouldn't, um, complete all of the items. Uh, and so they decided that, uh, they weren't willing to agree with that draft agreement that's in your agenda, they basically made a counter-agreement. Um, but, uh, it, it's not what the township was looking for, and while I will attempt to negotiate a contract, and if we get close enough, we will bring it back to you for consideration and let me make the call, but we're far apart right now that, um, I'm not even, I don't think it's even worthy of bringing to you at this point. If I talk to the attorney and we're able to get closer, then we will bring it to you to make that call. If we're not close, then rather than wait a month, um, I believe the supervisor's looking for authorization, that if we can't even get close enough to where we're comfortable bringing it back to the board, to authorize litigation, so we can move forward.
Right, cause the site plans, it's very specific what they're required to do, so there's not really any room for negotiation.
So, in a motion, do you want like a deadline?
No, it's not necessary, I mean, we'll, we'll bring an update to you at the next meeting, whether it's, here is a revised contract, or we've initiated litigation and we'll keep you posted. So at this point, the motion would simply be to authorize the township supervisor to attempt to negotiate a contract acceptable to both parties, and if not, to initiate litigation.
So moved.
Second, there you go. Very good.
Motion by Winchester, support by Kineman.
That's worded motion, I think you were ahead of.
Well, there's been.
I like how that works.
There's been oftentimes where I've said the chair entertains a motion to do something, and you could simply say so moved, and then oftentimes, everybody repeats it over again, but that was good, that was right there. All right, um, let's do a roll call on that.
Okay, I'm sure it'll cost money.
Pardon?
I said I'm sure it'll cost money.
I'm sure it'll cost money.
Karen Winchester, yes, Jennifer Ryan?
Yes.
Derek Burton?
Yes.
Ryan Mattson?
Yes.
Michael McCanny?
Yes.
Richard Kineman?
Yes.
George Cullis?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Now, number four, are the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes, thank you, so this is the last thing I looked at, uh, for this meeting, since it was here, so I figured I wouldn't have anything to add. But with that, I, I did just want to clarify, on, on a couple of these, I seen Trustee Ryan as the individual, and I didn't know if that meant Treasure Ryan or Trustee Mattson.
Yeah, I was gonna bring it up as an error, yeah, it was, should say Mattson for the under.
For all of the Ryans, cause there were, I think, like, two or three I seen.
Okay.
No, and I read it, I thought, my memory was just that the, under approval, where it says Trustee Ryan, right under agenda approval. It should be Mattson, and then the motion by me to approve it.
Which, which is, under which item?
Uh, right at the very front, if you look at agenda approval, it says Trustee Ryan to Trustee Mattson about adding item ten, and then the sub-point underneath that.
Okay.
In bold, uh, motion by Trustee Mattson to approve the agenda as amended, I was the first, I was the one that made the motion.
Were these all you?
I don't think so, no, I, I, when I was looking it over, I think the only two errors were those two.
Yeah, there was like three or something.
Okay.
All right.
Pretty easy mistake to make.
Right, yeah, I know, that's what I was like, oh, well, that could go one of two ways here.
Apparently, I wasn't reading them really well when I, when I got them.
All right.
Okay.
Are there any other additions or deletions to the minutes? None appearing, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five minutes as amended.
Support.
Motion by Winchester, support by Burton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to our last public comment. It's the same as before, it's three minutes long, start out with your name and address.
Eric Fair, twenty-one oh nine Middle Ridge Drive, Riverside North. Um, uh, unfortunate that we didn't get it signed, agree to sign. Speaking to the residents, I mean, there are, I think the biggest negotiating, um, item on the drive, the trees. And we're speaking to a lot of residents, I'm on the board, trees are not an issue. Number one would be the sidewalk safety for the kids being behind the school. And then our green space, that we deserve, that our common area cleaned up, and, um, you know, being able to use that. Um, those are the two major things that need to be done, I mean, if trees is an issue, I'm, I'm sure we'd be willing to, you know, forego that, so that's just my input.
All right. Thank you.
Martin Andruski, twenty-one oh five Middle Ridge Drive, uh, here in the township. Um, hi, obviously, it would be remiss to say we're disappointed that it isn't there, this is the fourth year running that I've been coming to the, the meetings, trying to, um, pray for something, scream from the mountain tops and, and fire off countless emails and, and so on. Um, although, when I read through the agreement, I did have, you know, questions, I realize you're not here to answer them, but I will follow it up with an email and, and we'll proceed that way, but it's, it's kinda vague when we talk about the security bonds, at one point in time, we talk about that we should have a hundred and eighty-eight, seven fifty, and then we talk about the, we only have one oh five, eight twenty, and then we go into some language about who's who and who's that. So I guess, as homeowners there, that especially that, it now appears to be financial things, which, that, that, since we don't have enough security to cover it, to, to entice them to do it, the questions we have is, have there been disbursements? Who authorized the disbursements, where did the disbursements go, has there been any interest collected on it? Who had the authority to make disbursements? So, in other words, where did the money go that should be finishing our sub, that's been holding it up? The, I've said it time and time and time again, there's eighty-four people that invested in this community, and no one's saying that you haven't been trying, but at the end of the day, we're, we're right back at our, at our starting point. Someone, someone said to me the other day, they said, you should be grateful you got the roads, and I was very blunt with them, I said, I'm not grateful to get something that I paid for. If I went to Walmart and I bought a TV, and they helped load it, and it was in the back of my truck when I got home, I wasn't grateful that it was back there, I paid for it. I was entitled to it. Yes, I am very passionate about it, yes, I believe people would just love for me just to go away, I'm not going to. This is my house, this is my investment, this is our sub, it is just looking worse day after day after day. We don't have a green space, the green space we did have, we paid to partially clean up. That's not fair, that's not fair at all. I don't know why it's taking this long, we should've just dragged their butts into court and been done with it. They've been playing us as fools, and here we are. It is frustrating, maybe not to the people that don't live in the sub, but it is to the eighty-four people that do live in the sub. Some people just picked, picked up and, and moved because they didn't wanna deal with it, it's been nothing but drama. And here we are, we're right back there again. I guess the last thing I would say is, if we find that there have been distributions that should not have happened, is the township going to make it right and put that money back, so that we get what's coming to us? And hopefully, with developments on the horizon, you know, in the, in the area, at least the township hopefully has learned from this in the, in the past, not to let people slide, and to, and to collect uh, monies that would represent what needs to be done to finish the subs, because this is a classic example. People have pointed fingers left and right, all over the place, it was a different board, it was different this, it was different that, to us that live there, we don't care. We pay our taxes, but we're not getting what we're owed. Thank you.
Anyone else for pub, no, all right. I will close the meeting at seven thirty-two.